Twenty eighteen city council meeting. If we agree with our implication and pledge allegiance by councilor Fieldwood.
Sweet Mary Hacks. Dear Lord, more and more each day it seems that people in our country are losing faith in the very institutions that were once so solid in their lives. Governments, corporations, philanthropies, and even churches are letting people down with the inappropriate, insecure, and insensitive behaviors of their leaders. We ask that you be with the city council tonight, Lord, as we go about the business of taking care of the city. Give us the strength to be better than the examples we have around us, and give us the courage to rise above even those around us may try to drag us down. Tonight, Lord, we pray for civility instead of hostility. We pray for cooperation over confrontation, for friendship instead of fear, for tolerance instead of ignorance, for understanding instead of division. Finally, Lord, help us do the right thing and make the right decisions to better the lives of the citizens of Statesboro and our entire community. In your name we pray.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which always stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this point in time, we move down to agenda item number two, which is a great additional public presentation. If you will, if you'd like people in purple to come forward. Mr. James, Mr. James. You'll tell them who you are. My, my, there are two of us.
This is the commander, James Kane, of the Military Order of the Purple Heart, Chapter five ninety-six out of Savannah, Georgia. And the purpose we are here today is to present and make Statesboro a Purple Heart City. So we are doing our part from this side. We talked with the mayor and some of the other council members, and we want to continue. Some of you probably traveled down ninety-five when you saw Purple Heart Trail. Well, that's part of this organization, and it stretches from New York to Miami. So we just wanted to make this city and university here, we already talked with them, and we want to do that for our community here. And I'll command it, James.
We would appreciate if you all would let us make it a Purple Heart City, and I think it'd be a great benefit to the community itself.
Thank you. I want to commend Councilman Duke for taking leadership on this. He reached out to me and said that he had had some conversations, and these conversations were rounded around making the city of Statesboro a Purple Heart City. And one thing that I'm extremely proud about Statesboro and our tradition is that we definitely show our support and our love for our men and women in uniform. So I think it's only fitting that we are now becoming a Purple Heart City via this proclamation. And this proclamation reads, "Whereas the people of the city of Statesboro have great admiration and utmost gratitude for all the men and women who have selflessly served their country and this community in the armed forces. And whereas veterans have paid the high price of freedom by leaving their families and communities and placing themselves in harm's way for the good of and whereas the contributions and sacrifices of the men and women who served the armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedoms and way of life enjoyed by our citizens. And whereas many men and women in uniform have given their lives while serving in the armed forces, and whereas many veterans have received the Purple Heart Medal as a result of being wounded while engaged in combat with an enemy force construed as a singular meritorious act of essential service. And whereas August twenty-first, twenty eighteen, has officially been designated as the day in Statesboro, Georgia to the remembered and recognized veterans who are recipients of the Purple Heart. Now therefore, I, Jonathan McCollum, mayor of the city of Statesboro, do hereby proclaim the city of Statesboro, Georgia, as a Purple Heart City, a city and a nation so designated honoring the service and sacrifice of our nation's men and women in uniform wounded or killed by the enemy while serving to protect the freedoms enjoyed by all Americans. So proclaim this twenty-first day of August, two thousand and eighteen." Statesboro, we're going to get this framed, and we will be hanging this up in our city hall because today we are proud. Thank you. We'll continue on with our agenda. We'll move down to agenda item number four, and soon we have need of public comments. We'll move down to agenda item number five, which is consideration of a motion to approve consent agenda, which consists of approval of minutes for council minutes of August seventh, August seventh executive session, and August fourteenth, call council. Is there a motion to approve? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Let's show agenda item five is passed. We'll move down to agenda item six, which is a public hearing, consideration of a motion to approve alcohol license application for a D-Blue's barbecue. Is there a motion to open the public hearing? Is there a second? All those in favor? Planning the zoning, are there any issues? Chief? Chief?
No, but she's.
All right, is there here anyone here to speak for or against the request? Is the motion to close the hearing? Is there a second? Any discussion back out? All right, is there a motion to approve? Is there a second? All those in favor? Let's show agenda item six is passed. We'll move on to agenda item seven, which is consideration of a motion to approve application for section six dash seventeen D, exemptions to open container for provisions. The event is set for August thirty-first, twenty eighteen, seven p.m. to eleven thirty. And it's by the Blue Room, Khalil Laos, eighteen thirty channel role. Is there a motion to open the public hearing? Is there a second? All those in favor? Planning the zone? Chief? Chief?
No, she's.
Okay, is there anyone to speak for or against?
My name is William Ridgwell, Blue Partner of the Blue Room. Just wanted to be here to answer any questions that there may be.
Is there a motion to close? All right, we need council discussion. Excuse me. The best. All those in favor? Is there a motion, is there any discussion? Is there a motion to approve? All right, all those in favor? All right, let's show that agenda item seven is passed. We move down to agenda item eight, which is consideration of a motion to approve occupation tax certificate for massage parcs and permits for massages applicants. Eight, long life medical massage. Is there a motion to approve the public hearing? Oh, is there a motion to approve? All those in favor? Agenda item B? Is there a motion? Second? All those in favor? We move down to agenda item nine. Secondly, consideration of a motion to approve in order to follow orders, according to Statesboro Code Orders, we need chapter six, providing section six three definitions and section six nine minors in persons under two hundred and one.
Mayor Council, two thousand and eighteen oh three, that is the revision of our section six nine that governs the admission of minors into licensed alcohol establishments. Oh three is just simply the application of Michael's Law, which is ACGA three three twenty-four point one into our ordinance form, and it also has a couple extra specific, say specific sections that are on it. Two thousand and eighteen oh six is the rewrite that adds definitions to section six three, definitions for bar, bar, kitchen, event venue, live music concert, live performing artist presentations, pub, restaurant. And six four is also amended to add in the subsection E, the underage permit, which would allow bars and kitchens to admit eighteen to twenty-year-olds. It also has a complete rewrite with section six nine, and in that section, what it is is that those specific licenses types, bars, bars, kitchens, the event venues, low volume licensees, pubs, and restaurants have different admission standards for underage patrons. If there are any specific questions, I'll be glad to answer. If y'all want a complete reading out, I can do that too, whichever please, as mayor and council on that.
Is there any discussion by council? All right, is there a motion?
Yeah, I'll move to approve ordinance two zero one eight dash oh six.
Is there a second? All right, all those in favor?
Okay, before we go there, I want to just add something for staff, and I talked with Kane about this a little while ago. But one of the things that the business owners have asked for, and what this is a precursor to, is trying to make the licensing not only a little bit easier, but in their fiscal cycle a little bit better. Right now they have to pay again July first, and that's right during the middle of two months of summertime when things are slow. And so I would ask that if we pass this, then we also, in addition, or we can do it afterwards, direct staff and Kane to look at it, simple, getting rid of class B, class C, class D. If you have a bar, you're going to sell beer one in our hall. It should just be one. You should just get a bar license, or you get an event venue license, or you get a restaurant license. And all three of those things are there, and just to simplify it. And then, like I said, switch the renewal date to December thirty-first, again, in the interest of helping businesses earn their cash flow. Do we need to do that after, or?
Well, I mean, we'll have to do a complete license overhaul, and that's also, that's not just going to be in the section regarding licenses. There are also multiple revisions that will need to be done in order to find out. I know Mr. Backward mentioned, you know, that about Sunday sales, which is a restaurant, so that will cut out certain, you know, candidates that now have Sunday sales permits. So that's just one example of the multitude of revisions that will be necessary in order to do the complete license overhaul. But obviously, this was the first piece in getting that done.
But ultimately, you streamline it for both staff.
Absolutely.
Just wanted to mention.
All right, let's show that we do have a second, so we're going to move forward. All those in favor? All right, let's show that agenda item nine D is passed. Let's move down to agenda item ten, secondly, in consideration of a motion to approve orders twenty eighteen oh seven, the ordinance of the State for Code Orders is chapter two, amendment and appointment procedures for members of the Alcohol Advisory Board has set out for section two that's nine eight.
Mayor Council, this would change the appointment of Alcohol Advisory Board members to more place to reflect the sort of appointment procedures that we have for other boards in chapter two, which is our board's main section of the ordinance. The paper that's provided, and if you'll notice, there's a red line part in there. There's a question about whether or not, if after the initial appointment, if each individual member would then have their original appointment powers, or subsequent appointments would just be done collectively by mayor and council. So I would ask that any motion that is made for approval of this just have that condition of whether it is for, that it's by majority vote of the governing body, which is mayor and council, or if it is by individual mayor and council members.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve ordinance twenty eighteen dash oh seven, with replacements being loaded on by the entire board. Is that good enough, Kane?
By the entire council?
Yes.
All right, let's take it. All those in favor? All those opposed? All right, let's show that agenda item ten is passed. We move down to agenda item eleven, which is a public hearing, consideration of a motion to approve, application RZ eighteen oh seven oh one. Hackness and Holdings request a zoning map and limit of two point four acres of property located at eight fourteen South Main Street for the commercial retail to the R four high density residential. Zoning District ordered to develop a multifamily cottage community.
Yes, sir, thank you, mayor. RZ eighteen oh seven oh one is a zoning map amendment request for eight fourteen South Main Street. The applicant is Haken Holdings, Mr. Justin Hounds. The owners are FFF Properties, LLC, and S and F Enterprises. This property contains two point two four acres. Specifically, the applicant is requesting a zoning map amendment from the CR Commercial Retail Zoning District to the R four High Density Residential Zoning District in order to demolish the existing vacant metal building to develop a multifamily cottage community and not allow it in the current zoning district. This is the property in question highlighted in yellow. It belongs to South Main Street and backing up to Old Register Road. It's a long narrow lot. You see that as a site design plays out. This is looking up and down the Register Road, the rear of the property, the Register Road. This is the building in question that is coming down currently, looking down Main Street across Main Street. Surrounding properties across the street and down the street. These will be the style cottages that will be built. This is the site plan. Will include a total of twenty-one units, and they do have proper parking and all the other site amenities as required by ordinance. Planning Commission did review this. Staff recommended approval of the zoning map amendment based on the site plan dated July second, two thousand and eighteen, and architectural rendering submitted on July third, twenty eighteen, as part of the application. The zoning and planning commission voted five vote to approve the application with the staff and additional recommendations at the meeting to include bylaws and covenants that needed to be recorded prior to the convention. I believe there may be some folks here to represent the parties.
Thank you. All right.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm David Hendrix with Maxwell Reddick and Associates. I'm representing the applicant, Haken Holdings. Frank did a good job summarizing the project that he does, reviewing all the everything. We think it's a good fit for the area adjacent to the college, it's directly adjacent to Marquard three oh one. It's going to be a little bit different apartments than the Marquard is, a marquee huge building versus this multiple cottage style. Kind of like to see it, forces of Aspen Heights, and the architecture is somewhat similar. That's really the gist of it. I'll answer any questions.
Thank you. Is there a motion? I just wonder how much. Excuse me. Come to the mic and tell us who you are.
I'm Robert Costameres. I teach at University and just a resident here, but I wonder how much of the space here, it looks mostly like asphalt and buildings, is there any space for beautification, trees, et cetera?
Yes, it will need the green space and tree water in the orange. Those islands that are shown there that show the trees in it, they're required, so there will be trees up and down where people are there as well.
Frank, do you have any concern about the, that be like a traffic phone? You know what I mean? It's just kind of a street shot through there?
We did discuss that at the bright start, many of the possibilities of putting speed bumps in there.
Right.
And that was a discussion, and I think that would also be considered as well.
Is that something you think we should include in our approval? Just curious, it just seems like that could be, especially in that particular spot.
Is there a motion? You want to make a motion to approve with speed bumps?
I don't know if we can hear you, we'll just comment on that.
Not a city group.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the best we can.
We need to close the talk here. There you go.
Is there a second? Second? All right, and all those in favor? Agenda item thirteen, public hearing, consideration of a motion to approve, Northern Application CBD eighteen oh seven oh three, Northern Communications. Oh, my bad. Excuse me, guys. Done long now. All right, public hearing, consideration of a motion to approve, application RZ eighteen oh seven oh two. Ruins South request a zoning map amendment of nineteen point two acres from a fifty-four point twelve acre property located on S and S Railroad Bed Road from R ten slash R eight, single family residential to planned unit development, zoning district in order to develop a multifamily residential subdivision.
Yes, Mayor. RZ eighteen oh seven oh two, the zoning map amendment request for S and S Railroad Bed Road. The applicant is Mr. David Pierce of Lindberg South. The owner is CFN Partners and L and S Acquisitions LLC. Total parcel is nineteen point two acres. Specifically, the applicant is requesting a zoning map amendment of nineteen point two acres to be subdivided from a fifty-four point twelve acre property located on S and S Railroad Bed from the R ten slash R eight, single family residential zoning district. The PUD planned to develop the zoning district in order to construct a multifamily residential subdivision consisting of a hundred and nineteen units and two hundred and sixty-one beds. At this time, the property is serving as farmland in the current additional use. Again, if you're directed to the map, it's the highlighted area here, and you may remember that slender corner top portion there was recently rezoned for the fitness center. They will be using the same drive. You'll see that in the upcoming slide here. And this is the remaining parcel, the fatter section, the southern part here that we're talking about. Again, if you look to the top of this site plan, that's the drive I was talking about in question, the first drive that will get to the fitness center. It will have a loop developing here. You'll see they do have the dumpster and mail kiosk and substantial amount of green space that will be shown there. Landscaping plan is also going to be approved as part of this project. This is going to be a fee simple development, in that these will be sold individually. The original site plan that was submitted for planning commission did not show it that way. We'll see that as part of the planning commission recommendations. This is the property in question, this is currently farmland. This is the trail, bike path area there. This is looking up and down Railroad Bed Road, bike path on the lower level. This is the area of the site. And this is the revised site plan shown the fee simple outset. Staff did review this request. They did recommend approval to the BUD based on the site plan on July sixth, twenty eighteen, but at the regularly scheduled meeting held for planning commission August seventh, twenty eighteen, if I have been, the planning commission voted five vote to approve the rezoning out. With staff recommendations following, A, bylaws and restricted covenants to be recorded prior to construction commencement, B, staff approval of a new landscape plan, and C, site plan to revise for fee simple ownership. The approval will be based on the August fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen, plan amendment that you see before you today on screen. But this will be the site plan that will be approved today.
Well, you clear the planning and zoning has not seen these plans?
The only thing that changed is that the, the fee simple, that's right, nothing, the density, nothing else changed.
Well, that's still a pretty significant change.
The site plan did not change. It just added dimensions around each one of those lots, and planning commission is aware of that, absent the, absent the planning commission.
What I meant was, you know, we're not, our communities are having problems with the centrally organized apartment complexes. We're not typically having issues with those. But we're having, and I think the chief will agree with this, we're having significant problems is in these older, particularly the older developments, but that are individually owned, and that there's no way we can do something that, you know, the city has no real power in those places to compel the owners to do anything, so it becomes quite a mess. This just.
Yeah, this is what was presented in planning commission. This is what they approved. The only thing that changed was the actual site plan and the dimensions of the lots.
Yeah, but there's a difference between being a single owner and a hundred and how many years?
Plan commission was where, that's what they presented in planning commission.
That it was going to be sold?
Yes. Oh. Part of that requirement is one of the staff you see is the bylaws and covenants that give us a little bit more control. And I'm not sure some of the past developments.
So the bylaws and the covenant is not created as a yet.
They will be required prior to getting into construction before any of them are completed. They have to be approved by staff and recorded and got it going out prior to, I'm sure. That's how it would be all developed.
You know, I hope states won't stop tonight, but I'm kind of in agreement with Councilman Boyd. I am a little bit concerned. I am a little bit concerned, a little bit concerned about that because of the issues that we are currently facing. Council, what's your thoughts?
Mr. Mayor, I agree with your concerns and Frank. I still, you know, my experience in planning and zoning, I'm so concerned about the traffic impact. Both as it affects the bike trails that's there and the actual unique design of Railroad Bed Road in itself. As well as the third condition is the ingress and egress to the city and the county from that location. And it's very hard for us to stay ahead of traffic when behind on regular. Was there a traffic study done in this particular case?
Traffic study was not required by the engineering department. I do believe they analyzed it.
Now, the road serves as that, is the county's road, is that correct? Yes, though I'm having a hard time here answering.
You can make better notes. There's been some discussion about that, some debates, so. There's an agreement, so.
I'm working through that. We're working through it, we're trying. Do we need to put a pin in this until we get a more specification?
Just max that. There's as many units as they get on that piece of their, under the levels, really. They're under the. I think that road, there's been concerns about improvements on that road, I think it has been funding.
Councilman Duke, this is your district.
It is, and I'm concerned about this. I trust the developers here, they have enough experience in this particular road to address some of these problems. I'm sure they will point it out. I'm of the intention to allow us to go forward, but I wanted to publicly identify the problems as we've just done because we have been working, all of us, to address those. Frank has been working, as well as Frank, all the staff has been working on this problem. And it's just a question of where the city and county once again have to get together to solve this problem. Very real transportation issues in that particular fast growing sector. Because I have to sit on the county planning zoning board, and that area of county is one of the fastest growing that we have. And they're very, I'm making the chair one. The Board of Education this morning on that issue of growth in that sector, and he's already realizing the need for a lot of issues that has a high impact on the school. So this is something I think we can agree to, but all realize that we've got some issues that will not wait on us to sit back and let someone else bring us a solution.
And I'll just add too, now this is an area that has been identified as gonna be the future growth of the city. This is one area, and I think everyone knows that as well. So there's still a lot of undeveloped area out there, and that's where the growth is gonna be continued for the city, so it's gonna be a problem that we'll deal.
Mr. Mayor, my residents out there have expressed a desire to be a better ingress egress of Quan Road. We've got a school, we've got two major churches now there with large congregation, we've got all these homes. Public safety response would be greatly enhanced by more than half if we had that ingress egress for either Fair Road or end or vote the bypass or highway. But, and I've been personally working with various government agencies within the county and city to move in that direction. So I don't have a problem with this moving forward at this point in time.
Okay, at this point, do they have a motion?
There may be some votes.
Can we speak to it?
Who is it? Who is waiting? Okay.
Moving up here.
Okay. All right, there's a motion to open, move into public hearing. Second, all of them, Frank.
All right.
Come forward. Is it just somebody one or does it probably?
Maybe there are a lot of people here.
This is, I'm Robert Kostemiras. I'd like to speak as someone opposed to this development. I think as a, as a resident who has enjoyed the greenway, this is gonna be kind of the first blow to basically turn the greenway into a gray way. And I think the density that's proposed here is insane. It's two hundred, and how many beds are, are gonna be in that development? Every one of those students will have a car, and they'll be coming in and out, crossing, crossing the bike path multiple times every day. That bike path has pedestrians, elderly, children on little bikes. It's, it's just entirely out of, out of character for that area. It's a single family use zoning issue right now. To check, this is, this is, this is the farthest thing from single family. I just, I cannot understand how the city council could allow this to go forward and change the whole character of that greenway. It's called a greenway for a reason, right? If we want to develop it, there are plenty of places to develop that aren't right on the one little bike path we have in this county. And I would say let this one go and keep it single family. The gym approval already is a travesty. Twelve thousand square foot building on that site? It makes no sense. This will make even less sense. So I say no, and I hope you will say no too.
Anyone else?
Here's the mayor, Chief Counsel, my name is John Dodson, I'm from Maxwell, representing developers this afternoon. As Frank pointed out, this property is nineteen point two acres. One thing on your drawing, Frank, you can go back a couple of slides to the shape, to where you have crosshatched. If you look at this drawing, this property is divided into two fields. We're on the upper part of the smallest field. Still remains to be developed as a area between the field to the south. As I said, to answer Mr. Boyd's question, we looked at it, we came in with the density that would fit the zoning requirements. We did not put the maximum number of beds that we could put on this parcel. As Frank alluded, we have two hundred, two hundred and sixty-one or two hundred and sixty-two beds. We have a hundred and nineteen units shown with a combination of two and three bedrooms in each one. This is not targeted for student housing, these are for families. The area will have a homeowners association that will have covenants, as Frank alluded to, that will have to be in place prior to any construction. What can go so far is to encompass the buildings themselves as far as the homeowners association. Think of a kind of medium to where each house would have to be the same, there wouldn't be a hodgepodge of different colors, that kind of thing. So we will have covenants in place to govern this, to guide this, and we would ask community. I'll try to answer any questions if you can, if you have. Thank you.
I have a little question, put it up. I have a question, what size is each unit gonna be? How many is it, a thousand square feet, a bit, twelve hundred?
Twenty, thirty by thirty-six would equate to a thousand and twenty, something like a thousand square feet, yes, sir.
John, you say that the intent is not student housing.
No, sir, that's not what these are here for, these are here towards families. The way they're set up is that you could buy one unit out of a three unit building, you could buy the entire three unit building. And then be set up to be able to sell individually. So in other words, you could buy one and I could buy two in the same building, so.
So it's designed for families?
Yes, sir, two and three bedrooms in each one, yes, sir.
You think it's one of the thousand square feet?
Yes, sir.
Well, fair.
Oh, we might. I got some kids.
It was worth mine for my wife, and I said, our horses are growing, going, keep coming back.
Okay, any further questions, but, no? All right, thank you, we have someone else that would like to speak as well. When you get to the mic, please, station that.
I'm Danny Gleason, and I'm employed by Georgia Southern University. And I was on the original greenway steering committee that was developing the greenway in the county. And I do have concerns about, about development in this area, primarily due to some of the traffic concerns that we've been discussing and the way that the, the road is designed. And I would also like to point out that it was a long hard road to get these greenways, get this greenway developed. We're looking at potential expansion now into the county. It's clear that having the greenway has improved the quality of life within Statesboro and within the county. We get numerous comments, if you went to the public meeting the other night, you can see there were people there that are, they are supporting the expansion of the greenway. We don't want to make people who are doing development angry, very, that's not the point because we may turn them against having other greenways in the, in the county and in the city. But what we would like is very careful consideration about how this development is done. As has already been pointed out, there are parents and children that use those greenways, cyclists, runners, people take their dogs out there. It's an area that's, that's used extensively. And so when we continually build entrances and exits off the greenway, we increase the, the danger factor. Also, it would be nice if there would be consideration of the vegetation and other things that are planted along the greenway. When they put in the commercial development, that, that was along the greenway. There was encroachment there even though there was not supposed to be. So these things need to be considered. We, we realize development is going to take place, we realize that Statesboro's growing, but we would just like very careful consideration of any development that's gonna take place along the greenway because building things there takes away from the safety and also the aesthetics of the area. I would argue with someone who says this land has no other use. If it's left, it's farmland, or left to go to wild. So, thank you. Any questions or?
Anybody just skip forward or dance?
I did just more or less a question.
Good evening, gentlemen, Mayor and the Councilman, my name is Keyshawn. How is I am a student at Georgia Southern University, and my question is towards the developers. Where is this relative to Georgia Southern University? And you're not paying attention.
No, sir, this, this is actually, you know where the bypass is? And Chili's in the Toyota place?
Yeah.
You know where the bike trail called crosses Quan Road? Ride past Quan Road, there's Beacon Hill on the right. We're right past Beacon Hill on the right. So behind the big church, behind the school, right there on the right. Probably three, four miles from there to Southern.
Thank you, yes, sir. Sorry, I'm not, I'm sorry.
Can I just, please, forward?
I'm Jazz Cawthon, and I live in Edgewood. And Edgewood was designed to be a single family house, a unit there. And, um, single family houses. It's an elderly housing area. But it wasn't designed for students, wasn't meant for students. Most of the houses are much more than a thousand square feet. And a lot of the houses in Edgewood have students in them, five or six or seven. So I just, just because you aim it at single family residence does not mean that somebody is not gonna buy it and rent it and rent all three red bedrooms to separate people. Thank you.
In the last four minutes. I was waiting on you.
I gotta get you out to the door.
Yeah, no.
I'm Carolyn Alton, and I'm Mr. Duke, my neighbor, and city council. Thank you so much for all your hard work. Here's what I'm hoping. I'm hoping, oh, don't be frightened by my pile of paper, it's all printed really big because I can't see very well. So it's not as long as it looks. What I'm hoping here tonight is that we can all work together to come up with a solution that works for this particular situation and also for all situations in the future. As Danny Gleason said, we realize that the city is growing, that there's gonna be development. And as somebody earlier on said, this is the first, and we wanna do it right. We wanna do it right. We don't wanna do it like unconsidered. And it is very disturbing to me to find out that the covenants haven't been written in, we're not exactly sure what they're gonna do, and that's to come later, and this, you know, I understand that we're all busy and things have to happen. But this is our town, and this is a precedent setting situation. We wanna do this right. We wanna make sure that the green in the green space is preserved all the way from here to Brooklyn. I bring people all the time from all over the place to our greenway, and they all ride it and are impressed. Because our wonderful sweet town has such a wonderful thing for everybody to enjoy. The other day, I took a friend from Savannah, we rode, there was a huge thunderstorm, thunderstorm on way. We rode our bicycles out to Brooklyn. It looked like it was gonna rain again, we sat under the awning at the old post office cafe, which is at the terminus. It will be the end of the, of the greenway as the county pushes it out. And waited for the thunderstorm to pass, and then we rode back to town. And I'll tell you, that was a really, really nice day. And I want more people to have that kind of really, really nice day, including the people who eventually are gonna live on this greenway. So what I'm hoping is that we can come up with practical, smart solutions and good design that makes the greenway possible, that makes good development possible, that makes our town a place that people want to live. We don't need to keep building all kinds of things everywhere without consideration for all of us who are gonna live here together. We wanna have a place where there are things for us to do. So who am I? I use the greenway all the time. I ride my bicycle on it, I took my nephews on it, I'm on there almost every day. Right now I have cancer, and for me, it's salvation. I go out there and I can be in the green, I can ride without feeling like I'm gonna be flattened by a car, and just kind of try and heal myself. I love seeing all the people on the greenway. How many, I hope you've all been out on the greenway because it is the one place in Statesboro where all different kinds of people gather. I love that about the greenway. Every day, we, we were riding in, a number of people are here, raise your hand if you're here in support of the greenway. Yeah, there are a lot of people here, and there are way more people out on the greenway that are probably too busy living their lives to be able to come here and speak tonight. I, I love seeing all those different kinds of people. I'm a nature lover, and I love to see the irises bloom and the maples turn red in the fall. I'm a nature lover and I love to see the irises bloom and the maples turn red in the fall. I've had a heron take off right in front of me. I'm riding my bicycle and the heron took off and rode right in front of me and right down the greenway for the longest time. That's magical when that happens for people. I almost got run over by a deer one time. The other day, we were riding in Saturday after our usual Saturday ride and we were riding in on the greenway. And there were numbers of families out on bikes, little teeny kids on little teeny bikes. And they're like all over the place, you know? They're not like riding, following the rules. They're learning how to ride their bicycles. And it's where people come to bring their kids to learn how to ride their bicycles and learn how to walk in the woods and enjoy nature. And that's really important. And that can't happen if there are all kinds of cars crisscrossing back and forth across it. There are people walking dogs, there are old people. There's, if you've been out on the greenway and you folks will know who these people are, there's a gentleman who's out there almost every day and he is the friendliest guy. And he is bent like this and he walks that way like this because it's a safe place for him to be. He doesn't have to worry about traffic and he's out there with his greenway family. There's a blonde woman who walks, she's like this. She never says hello. The whole greenway tribe were all like, hi, hi, good morning. She never says anything. She's in her world. But I'll tell you what, I admire her because she's out there every day and I've watched her lose weight and get strong. There are plenty of women out there doing that same thing. They feel safe. I was out there just the other day and I swear I saw Beyonce. She's as big as I was and tall as I am, but like way more curvy. And she wears really wild tights and she was singing away. And there are all kinds of people out there enjoying that space. And so it's really important for us to do this right and preserve that space for them. Now, density can be a good thing. I come from a city that thrived, that was about density. They were like, okay, we got to make this city dense because it makes for efficient delivery of services. It brings people together and it can create a really great place to live. You see your neighbor, you know your neighbor. It works. It can work. But it has to be done right. It's not just putting one thing right next to another, okay? It's thinking about what kind of place is this going to happen? How the development happens is what's at stake here. So I hope that we can work together to come up with some solutions. And I looked at the master plan. I've looked at it a bunch of times. I love that our neighborhood is considered moderately declining or something like that. And you know why they consider it that way? Because it used to be a single-family neighborhood that now has lots of students in it. And now I happen to love that about our neighborhood. It makes me feel young. But I think it is something to consider as we're considering developing this space. So I thought about a bunch of solutions, some simple ideas that might help preserve the greenway for everyone. None of them cost very much money. They improve the economic investment of all the stakeholders, including the people who own the land and the citizens who are currently enjoying it. These are ideas that, I've lived in places that have had greenways that have been beloved, who have had to solve these problems before. The problems of traffic entering and exiting, the problem of maintaining green space. And I hope we can look to them for solutions to our problems and make them, tweak them so that we can apply them here. Rather than just saying, okay, let's build this and then have to retrofit and solve problems. And that's way more expensive. Let's think of it in advance. So I'll throw out a few solutions, a few ideas here. Let's have a planting buffer along any kind of development that happens along the greenway. So that there are large trees, large shrubs, there's green going along. It helps maintain the privacy of the developments. It helps maintain the green along the green space. It keeps the five-year-olds on the bicycles on the greenway. And it can make it safer and more beautiful for everyone. It also improves the property value of these developments. Study after study shows, many of you know I'm the director of the Botanic Garden. I'm constantly reading studies about how property is worth more if it has green on it, if it has large trees. And so that would help the landowner and it would also help maintain the green of the greenway. And I think it's really hard for anybody to say that we shouldn't beef up, you know, our plantings along the greenway. Danny made a really valuable point in that that land does serve actually a very important infrastructure function for the city. Right now, it's farmland, but it's also soaking up tons of storm water and helping prevent erosion of the greenery on that property. We need to make sure that those things are taken care of as well. And that that parking lot doesn't channel water out into the road and into the green space or run off quickly into all those wetlands that are surrounding that property. I think we have to thoughtfully address how the developments are going to intersect the greenway. Right now, I love all those trees that are planted in place, even the ones that are falling over that they haven't stood back up again. But the entrance itself doesn't protect people from using the greenway from drivers focused on entering the traffic flow. Nobody wants to run over a six-year-old on a bike. And if a driver hits me, I'm going to leave a big dent in their car. So let's look at how the entrances are constructed. Maybe there could be a rubble strip before the car gets to where it has to stop. Maybe there could be an uphill incline before it intersects with the greenway. So it encourages them to stop. Maybe we narrow the road so that the car perceives the road getting narrower. It slows down, it goes uphill, it hits the rubble strip. And so it stops before it launches itself out into the road, into the traffic. All of these work really easily and they improve the property and cost very little. I've already talked about erosion, so you're lucky, yes, skip that page. The last thing I'd like to suggest is that we avoid putting parking lots right next to the greenway. That doesn't help anybody. All it does is it breaks the green space, which is an investment that our community has made. There's no point in building this beautiful greenway and then putting a parking lot right there. It also makes it really dangerous. As Director of the Botanic Garden, I can assure you that we have not enough parking. People are so creative and so angry when they're dealing with parking. They will park on the sides of things. They will invent their own parking situations and they feel like they are always in a hurry. We don't want to have that happen with the parking along the greenway. We want to make sure that it's controlled, that they're not creatively parked and that we're not seeing the cars from the greenway. Why does the parking lot have to be next to the greenway in front of the building? Why can't it be behind the building or shielded by plantings? All those, these things are very, very simple solutions that I feel like need to be thought out in advance before a project like this is improved. None of this costs a lot of money, but what it does take is a little time and a little care and thinking about those little kids on those bicycles and how we're going to make this community a place where they want to stay, where they want to work, where they want to raise their children. Not a place that they're going to leave because it's unsafe, unlivable. And honestly, there's nothing to do. So please, help us protect the greenway. Help us improve the land value for these property owners along this greenway and help us make this a really spectacular place to live. Thank you.
Is anyone else for audience? Okay, is there motion to close the public hearing? To whom? Any discussion by council?
I know people on both sides, especially both sides very well. I was wondering if we could postpone this? Would it hurt the development people so bad to come up with a few options?
Yeah, I'll speak for the development. Mayor, Council, my name is David Pierce. I'm speaking for Windward South and SNF Railroad of Ed. And a lot of the things, and I don't know your name, Ms. Karen. A lot of things that Karen addressed, the city does take into consideration. We've got weapons along the backside. We cannot touch the weapons. We've got to address the stormwater in a proper and safe way. That is, and the laws that are maintained by Georgia, the state of Georgia, also governed by bullet counting in Statesboro, Georgia, that's being enacted to the city. We've taken, we will be hiring landscape architects. We will, also, this is maximum density. This is what we can get in this at a maximum density. We, the walking trail appeals to our development and what we would like to do here. There is no parking lot in this development. We did originally have a parking lot and we did not like that. We have gone to single parking and then some on the back will have garages. Because of the way that certain timelines and certain timeframes are set up with city council meetings and different things like that, we do not have enough time to personally address the situations and the issues that I see with this project. So what we are trying, what we have to do is get an answer from Statesboro on whether we can develop or not develop this property. I'm an outdoorsman. I mean, I can say with counsel and raise that I have both, I understand both sides. And I'm not looking to turn this into a park place. What our initial intentions are, and we can't always stick to our initial intentions. This would have to do with my ability to maintain. What our initial intentions are is to maintain control of the homeowners association. If we maintain control of the homeowners association, then we maintain control of association feeds and then green spaces. And we control, we control the development. I can't sit here and tell you that I can maintain and hold on to the complete HOA because I don't know what's going to happen in my life in five years. But as far as meeting what Statesboro requires, and I agree, we need more planning. We need proper planning for this to be a good development. It takes a lot of planning. And one thing that we are trying to do is do a copious amount of planning in a short amount of time. And so that's really, I mean, I don't, I wish that I could answer all of your questions. I wish that I could ease everything that you all address, but I don't know how to, other than going by what is governed under the codes and enforced by local jurisdiction. We want, I mean, so we, we would, our initial is that we will go before zoning again. We have to get maximum density first. We have to do that. That is an economic issue. These are single-family and they do, if you're coming, it opens up some investment opportunities for single families that cannot afford to build on a lot or build a home, but they can afford a small little apartment, a townhouse. Whenever they live there for five years, they can own and retain ownership of that apartment and then build a house in the subdivision of Statesboro or in a piece of property in Statesboro and then have subsidiary income from their first investment in Statesboro. The main reason why I approached this camera today and to speak was to let you know that we are concerned. We're not, I was born and raised in Statesboro. I grew up four miles from this place. I mean, I know, I've been on every dirt road around here. I mean, I didn't go anywhere from, I mean, I've literally lived here totally. I've been out of Statesboro longer than three months, maybe once in my life. So I, I mean, I understand. So that, I just want you to know, we are concerned about that. Very concerned.
So I'm looking at the landscaping chart that is too small for me to read. How many on that tree schedule, is that the number of trees that you're anticipating that will be planted in the subdivision totally? And can you tell me what that number is?
As I mentioned at the beginning, he's going to have to submit a revised landscape plan that meets the ordinance. This is meets the ordinance, but probably not the way Seagulls typically. We aren't all the specimens he prefers. I would say, and I'll flip it out to the peers now. I don't think as fierce as you can see from the site planning submitted of putting out dense landscape buffer along like we did the commercial development. He's presenting that as part of his proposal now, but we can make that a specific requirement like that's part of the recommendation. And I went off the wood line also at, when I was looking at my phone, I was trying to pull up an old email from the county engineer just to make sure before I spoke. He is requiring at that intersection that that trail be highlighted at that part of the intersection. So the trail will be same material and break up, so there will be a break there to kind of the rest of concern.
But even though this doesn't meet the break up, it seems really, would you say, what's this, the gross number of trees?
Counselor, yes, sir.
What's the gross number of trees, even if this isn't?
Is it shown right now?
Yeah. I can't, this is too small.
Hundreds.
I'm just trying to...
The city of Statesboro, any development over four acres will require an architectural landscape. There, the number of trees total, you can't read it on here. But I mean, it's just hundreds and hundreds of trees that meets the ordinance. Whiteoaks, cypress, what he's proposing to exceed for, who sees?
Well, Dave, what I was, what I'm proposing or asking, if we wait two weeks, are you going to sell your shovel? If you wait two weeks, it lets the rest of the...
Of course, yes.
Is that okay? I'm not talking about killing the project at all. I'm talking about making...
What I'm here counseling to speak of is to tell you that I want to work with Statesboro, period.
You want to work with me?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so that's what I meant to do.
I want to work with Statesboro.
But two weeks is not going to...
Jack?
Two weeks is going to make a difference on this project? It won't make any difference to me. One question I do have, I guess at the end, I'm Jack Carter, I was asked Frank or Ask on Mr. Dawson, where is the current zoning on the property now? What's the allowed zoning, allowed density to kill the property? Frank, develop without any changes?
It's close to what's being proposed.
So what's the difference in what's being proposed today and what is on time? I hadn't read that.
It would be a single-family, it'd be single-family units.
So they would be detached instead of attached?
If you have the land capacity.
Can I start clarification on that? You're saying you should have 119 single-family homes?
I was just saying that if you have the capacity to put it on the land.
But that is the land.
If you have the density, you can build the density. But if you have the green space and landscape and the tension and parking requirements, if you do a single-family home and you have a lot, individual lots, change.
So then you couldn't have 119?
It's allowed under the ordinance. That's the question. It's allowed, but I don't think you can get it without the land requirements. You have all the other requirements. And that's what I tell everybody. Because you have people call all the time, what's my, how many have I posted there? Well, by the time you put your detention pot, you've got a bigger detention pot. Detention pot, when you put your landscape requirements and you have parking requirements. Your density, even though it's allowed, reduces greatly when you have all the other requirements.
I'd just like to say one last thing. There seems to be no gap that the developer wants to cram as many units into this space as possible. That, just look at that, look at that picture. There's tons of woods and reef in there. And when you do that, even if you have a little space set back in the greenway, what's going to be dominant and pressure from the greenway is going to be developments all the way down. You know, it's going to change the character of the greenway. And it's not going to be very green and you can put some trees there, sure, that's nice. But it's still going to be building after building after building. be building after building after building, rowhouse. I think it's the wrong thing to put five greenways. Single family home is a different animal than this.
Can you further discussion with council?
If you want, like I was suggesting, if two weeks will be okay with y'all, we can come up with some listening to more concerns. I'm not talking about killing the project at all. Maybe better than that.
And Councilman Reeves, you know, you suggested not just listen to more concerns, you covered some very specific things.
Absolutely.
I was articulating very specifics that David and Carolyn, the different parties can agree on, that perhaps everyone would feel better about.
Absolutely. Buggers against the likes as, big buggers. Traffic complement measures for the street out there. Look at the code, see exactly what they're, where they'll be in 10, 20 years. Just looking at it. If that's okay, depends on you just.
That's one of the wonders of a public hearing, and I go back to, thank you for that prayer opening, Councilman Ford, about the public hearing. I heard things tonight that swayed me to support this delay. And I've been county planning this on a long time, this deserves a delay. I like the motion that we make a motion, it's appropriate this time, and we delay this until the next council meeting, so we consider.
Motion is tabled, I think, on the computer.
You have a list for your back end too?
Yes.
So the motion is restated to be tabled this till the next council meeting.
In the time we can take some discussion from the?
All right, we have a motion that's been seconded.
Hold on, before we vote on, how do I put this? I mean, one of the benefits of a greenway from an economic development standpoint, if you look at the Beltway in Atlanta, if you look at how the parks have developed in Savannah, and you go to Woodstock, Georgia and see the downtown features, the, you know, public green space type features they put in there. The one thing that all inevitably happens is it attracts people. I mean, the most expensive property in New York City is on Central Park, you know. So, I mean, the fact of the matter is, is once, they are on part about these greenways is once you put them in place, people want to live on them because they want to be able to walk to them, but it seems a little counterintuitive to drive to the greenway. So people want to live on them and you go to Atlanta and you see the Beltway, there's development along that. So, but I think to y'all's point is, we have to keep it an attractive looking greenway. We have to put in these safety measures and maybe, you know, we talked about this when they, or at least I brought this up when we put in the gym, you know, that they were putting the parking lot right on there and, you know, we opened up a short fence. So maybe what we need to have is some kind of development guidelines for the whole greenway. I don't know, I don't know if that's something that we can do in the next couple of weeks, but something, some kind of a standard that says, hey, we want to keep this buffer, not just on this property, not on every, you know, we shouldn't have to do this every single time, we should say, hey, if you're going to develop along here, this is the guideline you have. Almost like developing. Mr. Jeffries, your calculated founder, founder of the base?
I have a question. If you postpone this to the next meeting, is that a meeting, an evening meeting that Republicans can easily, or is it a daytime?
It's a morning meeting.
Would it be possible to wait till an evening meeting when some of us can come back? Otherwise, it's very difficult for us to make.
How would you willing to amend my motion to table it till the next evening meeting?
That's the dark Tuesday of September, that's only the tax day.
It might give Frank a little more time too to come up with at least some general guidelines for the greenway. I mean, I'm not talking specific heights and things like that, just some general ideas.
All right, so you want to retract the original motion?
Let me retract the original motion.
Okay. And you want to, what's the new motion?
With the new motion, I'd like to delay this for, until the next council meeting at 5:30 next month.
Is there actually a second to that motion? Hold on a second.
Aye.
All right.
Okay, before we go further, so, these ideas are usually ironed out between the developer and neighborhood. It isn't, the city isn't always a part of those discussions. So I just want to make sure that we know how this is going to happen, but that doesn't, that doesn't come through the city.
What's that come through the city?
Those discussions will take place between the developer about the landscaping and all those kind of items. Then they bring those to Frank and then, and then they bring them in. It isn't, it isn't for us to be the arbitrator between that, so that, so the neighborhood who has issues will meet with the developer and they will come back with a plan that they think will work. That's the way, that's the way I've done it every other place. It hasn't been where the city brings that together.
There's not a neighborhood there yet.
Well, you found a way here tonight and so, you will need to contact either the engineer or the developer and express your opinion about what it is you think you need to, you would like to see happen.
Carolyn, is there still a, is there still a green, I mean, you're talking about extending the?
Well, the county.
The Greenway Committee still exist?
It can.
Yes.
I mean, we're all.
That might be the, that might be the appropriate.
Yeah, whoever wants to have that neighborhood should be working through the developer or engineer to express what you think they would like to see happen.
I mean, they're right, if we don't, if we don't keep the greenway looking green, then it's going to lose its economic appeal to these people. And the whole reason people wanted to live, I mean, if you just started paving the parks in Savannah, people aren't going to want to live in those areas anymore because they've lost the features that the property there in person. So we certainly don't want to destroy something that's attracting people and that.
Well, the city manager is correct, that's the moment where it's, stakeholders and y'all expressed yourselves very well, and I would appreciate it if you continue your effort in working with Mr. Peters because he certainly seemed amenable to that. And I agree with you, Councilman Boyer pointed out, the greenway is one of our most attractive features and y'all say thank you for your work on that. I was just out there and it is a beautiful spot and all this auto build track, I wanted to be on it, is not, is more than track, but if you look at what we're working with and trying alternatives to get track in and out of that area, it's going to require that we all work together, so thank you for that work with Mr. Peters, please.
Hold on a second.
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Hold. All right. Let's see, let the record show that the mayor nearly said an hour ago that we need a provision. Okay. I will move now to agenda item 13, public hearing in consideration of a motion to approve application CBD 1807-3 Northern Communications Corporation to request approval of the gold site architectural plan submitted for 1.7 acres of property located in coming to East Vine Street, which is located in Central Business District, district per Article 8, Section 803, development in the CBD zoning district required, recommendation from city council to affirm that the plan will keep in mind integrity and harmony of the central business district. All right, is there a motion to open the public hearing? Hold on a second.
Aye.
All right, Frank?
Yes, sir. CBD 1807-03, CBD plan review required by the ordinance at 32 East Vine Street. The applicant is Northern Communications Corporation, the owner is also Northern Communications Corporation. This property is 1.17 acres. The applicant, as you mentioned, requests approval of proposed site and architectural plan submitted for 1.17 acre property located at 32 East Vine Street, which is located in the Central Business District, per Article 8, Section 803, development in the CBD zoning district required, recommendation from city council to affirm that the plan will keep in mind integrity and harmony of the central business district. As you know, this is the old train depot where we brought to you before from the neighborhood just behind City Hall here. The site is sits today, have taken it down, it's threatened for construction. Both directions come down, dreadful there. This is the proposed site plan, very close to where the old site, train depot was located. They have added some additional parking. And that's going to be a nice addition. This is the architectural renderings. It is very much in place with the old depot, just come down there. It's a black white, sides elevations and the front and rear elevation. Staff did review the application, recommended approval. Painting commission met as well, they recommended approval. And there may be someone here who can represent, they won't be able to handle.
All right. Thank you, Frank. Is there anyone to speak for organs? Are you?
David Edwards again, thanks again. I'm with National Design Associates, we did the simple size continuing design project in Frank, somewhere out there, they replaced this building, layout of the site, pretty much like it was, it was a store, and one thing we are doing is adding every gutter, adding the asphalt to the sidewalk, trying to various, we're covering utilities underground on the front, just try to clean it up. When Northern came to us, they mentioned that one of the sites looks similar to that section, we all agreed, really nice on the site. I don't think anyone's here to speak architectural side of it. I'd like to share my opinion, I think it looks more like a historic train depot than the old historic train depot did. And I'll answer any questions, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to speak for organs? Is there a motion to close the public hearing? All right, hold on a second. This is my counsel.
Yeah. Frank, what's along the, what's along the side of the building closest to the trip? This landscaping, it looks like the parking lot. I mean, there is a little bit around there on the back section, along the building, this landscaping.
There's an area there from the back end with FedEx, UPS deliveries, that's where we barely use the market.
That's in the back of the building, right? Are you talking about?
That's on the side, parallel to the tail trail.
I got you. And then is there, I can't see by the plans, but there's some kind of fencing along the back of the property where you guys, because you guys are currently storing like schools and trucks and, or at least you were at one point.
That's right, they're intent to get rid of a lot of that, although they do have plans that are caught on here, so it's harder to get them replaced that chain. And that's actually like part of Article 30, we downshift.
Yeah, they told us the first time you come.
Just stop reading, there are. Listen to the group.
All right, hold on a second.
Aye.
All right. Agenda item 14, consideration of motion to approve contract title utilities for improvements to the first pump lift station in the amount of $172, an average of $62.40. How are you doing, Steve?
Good, y'all. Steve, I just spoke to Julie's director. This is a project was identified as part of our cap, also, improvement program, renovations and upgrades to the first pump station by adding an emergency bypass pump. This pump will take over part of the pump, use if power fails or if you have an equipment failure. We do have a backup generator, the backup generator only works to the backup electric needs, backup if the pump breaks or if you have another technical issue in this part of this pump station, such high priority, feel like it needs to be backed up in more than one way. We did bid this out, we got three bids back. All bids were over budget. The low bidder was Tyson Utilities at $203,400. Under our purchasing policies, it does allow us to negotiate with the low bidder, so we went to the low bidder and negotiated a price closer to our original $150,000 budget. We are in a, in a contracting market right now, everybody's bidding and our prices are consistently coming in below. Your estimate's over a couple of years old, it's coming in at a budget. What we did was we negotiated, there was a general grading clause in the package and they took the grading out, we feel like we can do that with city staff. We also had indeed been posed to raise the existing wet well to a foot higher than what it is, because we did have some grass that was running into that wet well. But the contractor came back with the alternate idea, which was to use the existing lid and to add a water type manhole cover to add an elevation and seal some of the other penetrations by putting new penetrations to the lids. We were able to reduce that price and get the total price down to $172,962, which is we have between CIP funds and some additional funding within the budget, we feel like we need to do this project especially since it's such a high priority intersection. And we could ask, we could ask you to approve this, if there are any questions that you have to answer.
Thank you, Steve. Is there any discussion with the staff, I mean, council? Is there a motion?
So.
All right, hold on a second.
Aye.
All right, agenda item 14 is passed, thank you, Steve.
Very much.
All right, consideration of a motion to approve the local county historical society replacing his local marker on city property recognizing the grave of William Charles, Willie Henderson, the first determinant in the east side cemetery authorized the mayor's side of the road, understanding forced placement.
Thank you, Mayor, Councilman, Mr. Wolf's Director, fellow engineering. As noted, this is a request on behalf of local county historical society, in conjunction with our department to place a historical marker within the east side cemetery. Currently, there's already one marker out there recognizing the cemetery itself, an establishment cemetery. This request will establish a marker in the vicinity of the first grave, if you will, in the cemetery. Local County Historical Society has approximately 30 historical markers throughout local county and about half a dozen of those are located in the city of Statesboro. We have to take any questions or or proceedings or suggestions for something to handle.
All right, any special comments? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
All right, hold on a second. So, I think it's passed. Is there any other business for council? Just giving you any comments? Two things. Tim?
I want to come talk about the smoke detector. I just wanted to share, good evening, your inspiring chief, just wanted to share with you guys this evening, we recently put out a press release regarding a generous donation from Luke's Project 11. And basically their donation went toward purchasing 80 new smoke detectors that we will use in our smoke detector program. Just very briefly, just wanted to get on that fire department for the past several years have, through donations and different grants and organizations have tried to keep the stock of smoke detectors to be able to go out and install in underprivileged or homes really, anybody that needed one. As we all know, smoke detectors is just a proof of fact that they save lives, so we're going to make sure anytime that someone doesn't have one, regardless of the situation, if we're able to provide them one in the event that there is a fire. So, very appreciative to Luke's Project 11, as well as Lowe's, Lowe's is the one that helped us secure the smoke detectors and just wanted to share that with you. and just wanted to share that with you, to get stuff through that.
So, do people apply to you, or do they?
Typically, typically, we just get phone calls or referrals, uh, on occasion, we will respond to, you know, minor calls such as a smoke scare or smell, electrical, you know, burning, something like that, and we'll come across where they don't have one. We do carry, uh, you know, a few on the fire trucks, uh, and the guys have a standing directive not to leave any resident that is occupied without a work smoke detector, regardless of the situation, so, you know, basically, my thought is, is we ignore that on the back end of, you know, who should have put one in or not, so, at the end of the day, we wanna make sure our folks, you know, our citizens have, have protection. Just, just kind of a fun fact, we average about ten requests a month, and obviously, we have some busy times in the month. Usually, when we run those ads in the paper about the program, I usually spike it about one to thirty. But it is a great program, and I'm trying to continue to, to, to fund it, so, thanks.
Thank you. And Jason, uh, come up with, I'd like to see, do you project this?
I, it's crazy, though. So, a few weeks ago, city council approved a word contract with I Delsa Incorporated, an amount of seven hundred and seventy thousand dollars for the cleanup of the park. Here's a map of the, of the project area, um, it is, includes Bryant Street, Other Street, Kent Street, Porsha, Donny Simmons Way. Really excited about this project, uh, done a lot of work going on by staff over the last two years plus on this project, trying to get us to this point. But we're officially awarding the notice of receipt to the contractor, and anticipate starting work on Monday. We're, this will be in the process of putting notifications out, telling residents in the area, so that they can call our engineering office. And if they have any questions, any information, or need any information, and, uh, we're just excited, this, this work is drainage, blur, sewer, roads, uh, it's a big part for that area, um, we're just excited to finally get to this point, and break right and start work.
Thank you. All right, are there any other comments? All right. Counsel, you want to do what's considered a session? No. All right, is there a consideration, um, of a motion, or job?
So, move.
All of them favor?
Aye.
All right. I'm pretty.